Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could have a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
Jenny? Ms. Logan.
You're moving so quickly, I'm having a hard time.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay. Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the next part of the agenda. Board President comments here. The only thing that I have for everyone this evening is a reminder that, or maybe a first declaration, that in October, we are going to be moving to a little bit different format with our board meetings. So on October 8th, we will have a general meeting, and then on October 22nd, we're going to be having a work session. The reason that we're going to be doing that is just to dig a little bit deep into some of the stuff that we're trying to tackle as we head in to this new school year. Just a reminder that the work sessions are public, and they'll be noticed like any other regular meeting. Anybody have any questions, concerns about that?
No, just no action at that work session, generally speaking.
Correct. That's all I had. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, the only thing I would start with tonight, I have some other things later on in the agenda that sort of ties into that work session, would be the Ohio report cards were released just a week ago, or 10 days ago. And so I thought we did fairly well, looked pretty good, especially in comparison to our like districts. The overall grade was a B, but that gives us room for improvement. I can tell you, across the state, only 28 school districts received the A, but that gives us something to shoot for. But we'll talk about it at that work session, but also, the other key piece that we are waiting on is the quality profile report, which is coming out from the district any day.
Okay.
So that's what we're waiting on, and then we'll have further discussion about those things then.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Logan?
Okay, under my section, I have a couple of guests that I want to introduce, and both have good news for the district and the community as a whole. The first one is Erin Wiegand from Westchester Township, Director of Community Development, and he's going to be discussing the Toaster Project.
The Toaster Project, otherwise known as Project Toaster. Thank you, Board, for having me here this evening. I am with Westchester Township's Community Development Department, bringing you a little bit of an introduction this evening to a project that will actually be taking action upon by you at your next meeting. So there's no action here this evening. This is more of an introduction before that action. We do have a potential growth project in Westchester Township. The school board has always been a wonderful partner with us in these growth projects. Number 38 ranking in the best places to live doesn't happen by accident. The school is a huge part of that, and we thank you for that. They got cake for that.
Yes.
Good. I got cake.
Hopefully enjoyed. What we have here is a project of a significant headquarters growth for an existing company, looking at an $8 to $10 million capital investment in the project. To do so, they have requested a property tax abatement incentive to do so. We don't do these very often. I've only been here once before to ask you for the consideration of such. Our Board has, our Enterprise Zone Board has recommended a seven-year, 75% abatement for this project. That will be considered by our Board of Trustees at the October 9th meeting, and then forwarded on to the county commissioners for their consideration. Why we bring that here is that the schools are the biggest loser per se in any property tax abatement that we offer, so we work with Jenny's office quite closely on these types of projects to make sure that it's something that's still in line with the goals of Lakota School District. In this instance, as with our previous, we are going to discuss with the Board a 50% reimbursement directly from the company to Lakota Schools, which is pretty standard of what we've had over the years, kind of a standing agreement with Lakota Schools. So again, of the 75% that they'll be abated, 50% of that would be paid directly from the company back to Lakota Schools. In this instance, that works out to about a $50,000 a year payment directly to the schools. So we hope for your consideration of that. That becomes a separate agreement directly between Lakota School Board and the schools. Ms. Logan has already received draft proposals of that contract that will actually be signed between the Board, and that'll be what you're considering at your next meeting. So I'm really here just to kind of introduce the project for you, and if you have any questions at this early stage, I'm happy to help address them. Otherwise, I really, really just want to say thank you to the staff, to Jenny's staff, Matt's leadership as well. We work very closely with them, but also for our longstanding relationship we've had with the school board as well. We thank you. We can't grow without the good schools that are provided here in our district, and we thank you for that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I just wanted to kind of introduce the basics of this upcoming project to you.
Great.
Any questions? More to come on Project Toaster.
Oh, thank you very much. And again, thanks to Jenny and her staff, really putting a lot of legwork together for the schools on this. We appreciate that.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, Roger Reynolds, our county auditor, has good news. We're just going to keep the good news coming.
Well, nothing brightens up a rainy Monday evening like getting $465,000, right? So my name's Roger Reynolds. I work in the Butler County Auditor's Office, and for the past 11 years, I've been coming out to Lakota School Board, as well as all the additional school boards throughout Butler County, villages, townships, and sharing some great news, and the news of cost savings. And having two children at Lakota Schools, it makes coming to this particular location even better. Being a Lakota grad makes this presentation much, much better. And kudos to Ms. Scott, my accounting teacher back in 19 something and something, and for encouraging me to go into accounting, and more importantly, kudos to the folks over in the auditor's office for their commitment, for their cost savings initiatives, and knowing that their abilities to do more with less, utilize their skill sets with technology, eliminate as much paper as possible, in essence, cutting their office numbers from 78 people down to right around 40, which is below 1999 levels, has allowed us to, each year, provide our cost savings back to the local government entities through forms of levy fee refunds. And Lakota being one of the larger levies in the county is the largest recipient. To give you an idea of how our growth and cost savings has advanced, back in 2008, when I came to the Board for the first time, we were ecstatic, ecstatic, to present you with a check for $60,000. Because prior to our administration, no refunds were taking place out of the Butler County Auditor's Office real estate fee assessment pool. So to grow from $60,000 to $465,000 really shows you how, what a dedication we have to continue cutting costs and pushing people's tax dollars. I mean, it's your money, pushing it back to the local levels where it can have the most use. And like I mentioned, not only my daughters, but the community's children, grandchildren that are able to go to these schools, and as Erin said, make this a great, great community. We see the benefit of it, and we're thrilled. So again, on behalf of the Butler County Auditor's Office, I'm here this evening to present a check for $464,000 to Lakota School Board, and that makes a total of, I think, $3.2 million over 11 years. So please, use it wisely.
Take it. Thanks, Roger. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments for me?
No. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We really appreciate it. We appreciate your support.
Yeah. Thank you, Roger.
Okay, we'll move on to the administrative report.
Keith? Keith's going to kick us off.
I am not Katie Bauer. Sorry about that. But I would like to introduce her, and I want to take a couple of minutes to just set some context for what Katie's going to talk about. So as you know, coming into this year, our focus for the district has been really looking at our 712, and especially our high school student experiences, experience. And we've done a lot of work around that, and we'll be coming to you with a full presentation in November, but we wanted to let you know that the work is ongoing throughout the course of this. And I'm really excited, the fact that a couple of our board members have been able to be right side by side with us as we've done this work. We've been able to spend a couple of days at a conference with Ms. Casper and involved Ms. O'Connor in the, a lot of the work that we've done, our district council for personalized learning. So a couple of projects we've got along the way that we'll report out to on the end. One is that work with an outside consulting firm, really looking at our personalized learning in our district and what we're doing for every single graduate. And a part of that is developing what we're calling a portrait of a Lakota graduate. And at the November meeting, we'll present to you sort of a draft version of what that portrait of a graduate looks like, and what are those skills that our parents, and our teachers, and our business community, and our graduates have told us that they really need to be successful in their futures. We'll tie that right into all the work that we do, developing out that high school experience also. The other thing we've done is we've tried to engage people in a conversation about what that really looks like next. One piece of that is a viewing of a movie called Most Likely to Succeed. And in early November, we'll have two public viewings, one at East and one at West High School, to bring our parents in, bring our community members in, our business partners in, and it really does a great job of kind of setting the stage of what are those skills that we need to present to all of our students to be successful in their future. And so those are a couple of the things that we have had going on this fall. We've got a lot of commitment and support from our teachers at the high school. We've developed a group called Lakota Next, which is a lot of our department chairs and other excited teachers to co-create what this looks like with them, and I think they've been excited about that experience also. Another big piece of that is what we are calling real-world learning, how we're making sure that the learning that happens every day for our students is the kind of work that's going to benefit them in the future, and is connected to our business and our community partners. And so we've been fortunate enough, through the League of Innovative Schools, to be selected as one of six districts across the country to participate in what they call a challenge collaborative. And that is a group of six districts, supported with funds by the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative of Mark Zuckerberg's wife. And that initiative is all tied into real-world learning, and how do we embed that in the work that we do with our kids every day. Part of that is them recommending to us that you look at hiring in or bringing onboard a broker, what they call somebody to manage those relationships and foster those relationships with the business and community partners that we have out there. And we could not be more thrilled to have Katie Bauer onboard doing that work for us. And she has joined us, she has only been on our team for about six weeks, and she has already just made a huge mark in everything we're doing. I'm so excited to introduce her to you and let her tell you her story. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for having me and for my five to seven minutes. So you have in front of you, and I'll reference this a little bit as we go along, but a hot off the presses new piece that I'll be taking around as I'm out and about and meeting with industry partners and such. But to give you a little bit of my background, it's a gem right there. That's me, Lakota Tomahawks cheerleader, 1993-ish. I am a Lakota West graduate. I'm also a Lakota resident and parent. My background is in communications, and professionally, I've worked in higher ed for most of my career and pretty much solely in Butler County. So I've kind of made myself a little network around here. I'm very passionate about bringing industry into the classroom and taking our kids out into industry, because if you don't know what you want to do, how do you know you want to do it? And so we need to expand those horizons to let them explore before they leave us. But this is really my why, and they're really cute, so there's some cute pictures of my kids. But I do have a second grader at Heritage, and her four-year-old sister is right behind her. And they're very excited and very proud, obviously, at the Future Firebirds Night this past Friday, to be marching with their school and be members of this community. So as much as I care about this work in general, I really want it to be awesome for my kiddos as well, coming up through the ranks. My husband and I intentionally moved back to the district because I was such a proud alum of our district, and I wanted to make sure that this place stays as awesome as it already is. So my current focus is to really take the existing structure and expand as I can while not taking off more than I can chew. But bringing in those industry collaborations inside the classroom as well, because I feel like sometimes, as I'm finding these conversations go with industry, they're not really aware of what our kids are capable of. They might not have kids that are in that age group, they might not know what we're teaching. So I'm taking the opportunity to bring them in and to find a layered approach to that engagement. So I'm not just asking out of the gate, "Take 50 of our kids for internships all year long and do all these awesome things without us giving anything back." So we want to kind of get their feet wet with some interactive opportunities in the classrooms where it's appropriate, and then communicate what's available to students as well. And so I'm investigating different platforms and ways to communicate all of that, because right now, it's a lot of information, and I need more than a spreadsheet to keep all of this stuff. So I've been working with some instructors to maybe let some kids build us a technology or a platform or an app or a something that can keep all of that information, because right now, I want to make sure that we keep it all in a very organized manner, because otherwise, I don't want anything to get lost along the way. So right now, as I've been on, as Keith mentioned, about six weeks, I'm trying to do some just entry-level assessments and learn, get out and about, and meet people, and chat, and see what's going on, and what's going on with students, and what do they want out of my position. As the Strategic Partnerships Coordinator, that does not really give a great explanation about what I'm doing, just by title alone. So I'm doing a lot of explaining to students, especially, this is about getting you experience out in the real world. And yes, I've passed out about 500 business cards in the last six weeks, so. I don't sit. I'm also very highly caffeinated. But we're really looking at what does this experience look like from everyone's point of view. And I'm very fortunate that I get multiple points of view, you know, as a parent and as the professional, how does this work, how does everybody win in these situations? So that's kind of my focus, is to just learn right now and keep things moving. So we are adjusting the website a little bit as well, to refresh and provide current information. As I mentioned, we've got our new print collateral and things of that nature. So this is that, the piece that you have in front of you, I will draw your attention to the back corner. That QR code actually will link directly to my business engagement form, so if I'm out and about meeting with someone, they can scan that, fill it in, instead of just having to give me a business card. That QR code is actually on my newly printed thousand business cards. So as I'm passing, they don't have to give me one necessarily, they can just fill it out, and we can be on our way. Because I did feel like I needed something to leave folks as I walked out of the room. So everybody needs to, you know, marinate on things. So that is new, actually hot off the presses just this week. So long-range goals. Mr. Miller has challenged me to 1,300 internships, and I'm up for the challenge. 18 months, right?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm hitting the ground running and trying to find all of the people that are even just willing to read an email from me at this point. Let's start those conversations, having lots of coffees and lunches, and talking to folks about what we can do for them, as well as what they can do for us. We want all of our relationships that we build for these programs to be mutually beneficial. I don't want companies walking away feeling like, "Well, I just gave up a week of my time, and we didn't gain anything other than some good PR." We want to make sure that everybody feels good about the experience, and everybody's getting in on the level that they're comfortable with. So we're kind of designing that and seeing how it goes, and I think that, as I'm learning, there's not a lot of this going on nationally, and we want to be one of the first, and of course, the best, because that's what we are. So we're building that out to be a leader nationally in this work, and bringing business and industry into traditional K-12 in a way that no one has ever seen before. So one thing that's really important to me is that I learn from our students what they want, and find opportunities for them where they want. Yes, a lot of folks know the name brand and the big business around here, but there's a lot of wonderful opportunities that they just don't even know about. So in my interest form, I'm not necessarily asking them to apply for a specific internship, but I'm asking them what their interests are, because there's a lot of crossover as well. You know, if a student might be interested in agriculture and is also interested in auto mechanics, well, then I might be able to find them an opportunity with a farm machine repair organization, or something along those lines. Where do all of these sectors meet? Every organization needs IT people, but if you love food, then maybe you're doing IT for, you know, for a restaurant or a large conglomerate or some, there's lots of opportunities. So I'm just getting out and talking to as many students as I can, as often as I can, and as loud as I can, so they hear what I'm saying and fill out my form. Yay, engagement. So on Wednesday, you all received an invitation to the Business Kickoff Breakfast that we'll be hosting at Liberty. The goal for that day is to just provide insight as to what our district goals are to our current business partners. A majority of those attending are those that have had internships with us in the past. And so I'm looking to them to say, "What has worked well? What has not worked well? What can we do better?" As well as asking them for referrals. If there's companies that are not in attendance, you know, nobody knows you better than your friends. So allow them to provide us some referrals and to say thank you for their current engagement. We do have a few new folks to the mix that I've brought into the invitation list to sort of introduce these concepts. So I see more of this in our future, but right now, I'm having lots of one-off things, and that seems to be going well. But more to come as it gets built and as it expands. I will call attention to the fact that my email address is katherine.bauer. We do have another, surprisingly enough, wonderful Katie Bauer, who is a teacher within our district, and she very kindly forwards me all of my email. But I did get one for her today, so that was very exciting. I could return the favor. But any questions that you all might have for me so far?
What was the time on the breakfast on Wednesday?
It is eight to nine.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Katie.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Exciting, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Keith?
All right, that moves us into our first public comment time. Just a reminder, this is a public comment section for those that would like to speak on any agenda-related topics. Do we have anybody for public comment? Seeing none, we will move forward with our board reports. Board Policy Committee, myself and Todd.
There it is.
We have work to do.
Yes.
We have our policy committee coming up on the second, which will be our kind of regular Neola updates and other stuff. Community engagement?
We have many community conversations scheduled already. October 15th is a theater, theater community. We have a school safety one on October 16th. Both of those are at Plains, and then the October 31st Halloween with the Chamber at 11:30. A social media one that The Edge is hosting on November 8th at 6:00 at The Edge Teen Center. And then we rescheduled the junior high staff. So we have Plains and LJS on November 27th at 3:00 at Liberty Junior, and November 29th, Ridge and Hopewell at Ridge Junior, also at 3:00. So they're scheduling, we're scheduling out for December and the rest of the year, and they are trying to do an internship for community conversations, where they will have students from East and West, who will work with Jeff Steck and Randy Oppenheimer, and plan a community conversation, and invite people, and facilitate it. We'll have kids from both high schools. They're still in the works getting that up and running.
That's four of the 1,300 we need.
Pardon?
Internships. That's four.
Yeah, there you go. So we're up to four. Where's Katie? We did party Katie's job for.
And I believe I saw an email come out from Randy with all that updated?
Yes.
With all of those?
Yes.
Hey, Butler Tech and Career Development?
Butler Tech met on Tuesday. We completed both the Superintendent and Treasurer's Goals and Contracts for the next year, and we had a student presentation. This was pretty exciting. They were the International Sage winners. They won in the States and were allowed to go on as our representative for the United States. And Sage is one of the student organizations, which is about growing entrepreneurial skills in students. And they developed a way to use food that might otherwise be thrown out, freeze, dry it, and send it to other countries. So addressing hunger issues in innovative kind of way. It's called G-Foods, J-E-E Foods, and they won the world competition. So they had a chance to go to South Africa, and it was obviously a wonderful trip, and then walked away as the winner. So that was very exciting for them. The all-boards meeting is coming up on October 9th, and that will be at the PSEC Building. And that begins at 5:00. And I can RSVP if you'll let me know if you're planning to go to it.
I think we got an email about that, did we not?
You should have received an email and probably a paper copy in the mail. Is anyone planning to attend?
I am.
Great.
I will let you know.
Okay.
What day was that again?
October 9th.
And Matt and Jenny, did you plan to be there?
I cannot be there. I'll be at the Digital Promise League of Innovative Schools meeting with the Real-World Learning Collaborative.
Yeah, I believe I am planning on attending.
Okay. So Brad and Todd, if you'll let me know?
It looks like I can.
And the conversation's going to be around the adult education side of Butler Tech, which I think will be interesting. We hear a lot about the secondary, but you all don't necessarily have a chance to see what Butler Tech's offering that way, so it'll be interesting. I have a couple of copies of the student success for everyone to take. We also had the Future Fairs, which was put into place by all of the neighborhood, all of the Butler County chambers.
It's kind of a neighborhood.
Yeah, it is kind of a neighborhood. Put that on for us, and that was on Saturday. Unfortunately, they were still out there. The kids were rocking on stage. Our business partners were out there, but it was definitely a wet day, so I think attendance was down from what they had hoped for. And that's all I've got on Butler Tech.
We had an opportunity, I know Kelly joined me in going to the ribbon-cutting for the LaSorresville campus. It is beautiful.
Beautiful.
I mean, they did a great job with that space and just usability.
When you see where it started as an old, long-closed amusement park, it's amazing. And it was in a fairly short time, and it came in on budget, and all those good things, so.
Yeah, it's really nice facility.
So that's where the Future Fairs was, to show off that campus. It was an open house.
We appreciate the invitation. It was great to get over there. All right, legislative update?
You want to start, Matt?
Sure. I had a conference call late last week with the Alliance that we're a member of. They did talk to both governor candidates. Not much on education or on any of the report card changes. Speaking of the report card, again, the Duffy bill went down in defeat, but that, you know, we'd worked hard on, whoa. Sorry. That we'd worked pretty hard on. The discussion is still to overhaul that report card, with K-3 literacy piece being the most important, I think, for the state. And then probably my only other comment in terms of the legislative committee is, we're about 230 days away from graduation, and our seniors still don't know what the graduation requirements are. That would be a great story for somebody to do.
Ridiculous.
He was listening, wasn't he?
Yes, but...
I think you might have tweeted about that a few times, too.
A little bit. I'm just upset that, you know, if I had a senior, I'd be really upset that we don't have these requirements in.
Yeah, that's crazy.
And as an educator I am, but as a parent I am as well. So I'm hearing that maybe not until December or January for that to come out.
How in the world can they wait that long?
So are we in process, our administrative team, with how we can help support our seniors if there tends to be something at the last minute for them?
I really think that when it comes down to it, common sense will take over, and it'll be something similar for the class of 18 that just graduated. But there are no guarantees. I just think we, as a state, should have had our act together earlier.
I think it's something to address in our legislative visits, certainly.
Absolutely.
I agree.
I agree.
Jenny?
The only thing I have as an update tonight is the work continues on the school funding work group that I'm a part of, and I literally just got back from an ASBO Conference, Association of School Business Officials, which is a national conference. And I went to a two-hour session and listened to how Illinois just completely re-hauled their school funding for their state. And it was interesting to hear what they've done. Some things we do better than them, but then there were some ideas that kind of were interesting. So that was a good one to listen to when I'm on that committee and we're looking at all that, but that's about all I have for now.
I have several upcoming events, and again, we're expecting a lot of legislative activity as soon as the election's over. Until then, it's probably going to be a little bit slow. But they did decide how that 12 million that the state allocated through earlier legislation was going to be distributed for school safety and security, and it will amount to $5.65 per student or $2,500 per building, and that can be used for mental health issues as well. So I'm sure we'll be having some conversation about that. It's not much, but it is something. Excuse me. Tomorrow evening, the Chamber Government Issues Committee will be hosting alongside Miami VOA Learning Center, a candidate forum for the state representative position. That'll be at 7:00 tomorrow. Matt and I have a meeting, Innovative Superintendent's meeting up in Versailles tomorrow. I think we'll both be attending that. The School Safety Summit will be meeting on October 3rd again with our fire and police departments. And Matt's already talked about the report card, and Representative Lang has talked about co-sponsoring a bill to carry forward the work we've already tried to do in the next assembly. So I think there are those that are invested in making some changes. We'll just have to wait and see how that rolls out. There's a couple of other events coming up. Brad and Kelly, you may find this of interest. There's a forum just for brand-new board members in Columbus on the 1st, and it's on collective bargaining.
Okay.
So if you have the opportunity, it might be worthwhile. There's also an OSBA workshop on mental health issues on October 4th, and certainly since we're jumping into that in a big way this year, that's something of interest as well. And the final piece to put on your calendars is the OSBA Southwest Regional Conference is on the 11th of October. It's a Thursday, I think, and it's at the Miami Valley Career Tech Center. And you might want to let Melissa know if you plan to attend that so she can make a reservation. Did you have anything, Dan?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I think that's it, then.
You said on 10, I'm sorry, 10/11 you said was the Southeast Conference?
Yes.
Okay.
Southwest.
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 Great. Fantastic, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda here, which is the Treasurers' Recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations?
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion?
I do have, I do have a short presentation on the appropriations that I would like to just kind of review. It is that time. Next month, we will be reviewing the five-year forecast, so the one thing I want to say is this is going to be very high-level, but during the month of October, when we review the five-year forecast, we'll get into lots of details with that. So the appropriations are basically our budget for the year. Before July 1, we have to at least adopt temporary appropriations. We did that at our June 28 meeting. And then no later than October 1, you must adopt permanent appropriations, your final budget for the year. But it's really not final, it's permanent, but then you can modify it throughout the year if things come up. In Lakota, what we typically do is we do temporaries before July 1. We do permanent in September, and then in June, we'll do finals. The request, according to our policies, which, you know, that stack, I don't think this is part of the review, but part of our policy says that the way that we will adopt our appropriations is at the fund-object level, which means, you know, big picture, general fund, bond retirement, permanent improvement, food services, et cetera. And then the object detail really relates and is in line with the five-year forecast, your salaries, your benefits, purchase services, et cetera. So when we look at our overview of the appropriations, the budget, I think it's always nice to take a look at the total fund and to see where that lands, grand total. And I think sometimes it is a little surprising. I know we know it's a large district, but in all, we're appropriating, our budget is over $200 million a year. So it's, it is one of the larger businesses in this community. And then when we look at fund and object detail, you can see each fund on the left-hand side and then how that's split out by the numbers. But if you're like me, I like pictures. So when you look at the total funds and you look at the pie chart, you can see that 80% of our budget is within our general fund, which makes sense. Our bond retirement is 7%. Permanent improvement, which was just started in 2013, is 3% of the total. Food service, 3%. District managed activity, any idea what that might be? It's our 300 funds, our athletics, our bands, the extracurriculars. So that's what that accounts to. And then when you take a look of by object overall by funds, you can see how that splits out. So salaries, of course, is going to be the highest. Purchase services for this year with all funds is actually higher than benefits, which I thought was quite interesting. And when you take a look at this, you know, in a lot of districts, one of the things that people talk about is, well, how much of your budget is going towards salaries and benefits? When you look at the total as a whole here, it's less than 70% when you look at the total. When you go to the general fund, we are at 72% with salaries and benefits. One of the reasons why that is lower is when you look at purchase services, what is one of, what's one of the big pieces of our purchase services? Transportation. So in some districts where they actually employ their bus drivers and that is a personnel, that's going to be included in salaries and benefits. For us, that's included in purchase services. So it helps us with that salary and benefit percentages that we're actually spending.
It does.
It does. So in summary, this is our permanent improvement or our permanent appropriations, our budget, which we need to approve before October 1. It's at the fund-object level, which is in line with our policy. We can request modifications throughout the year in case something would happen, and we would need to do a big modification. And again, next month, we will look at the five-year forecast, and this should flow right into that. Any questions?
So when we do that deep dive next month, we can make modifications if needed at that time?
Yes. So when we take a look at the five-year forecast, we can discuss it, and, you know, it's going to be this year, which is the appropriations for this year, but then looking at an additional four years out. And we'll look at all of those details again, and if we want to discuss anything in the deep dive, yes. And I would like to do that during our work session, that's my goal, so that we can have more discussion. Instead of just doing it at, during the business setting, it's nicer to do that at a work-type of session so we can have better conversation.
Right.
Great.
I'm sorry, did I have one more question? What's the standard for purchase services for most school districts? And most of them do have transportation in-house, so if you set that aside?
I don't really have a benchmark percentage, but I can take a look at that and see what some of the other districts have and bring that to the work session. It's a good question.
It seems like we've been trending up on that, and I'd like to understand that better.
That would, our two big ones would be probably preschool, purchase services through the county and transportation. Are there any other big ones that we?
No, those really are those two outliers, though, where traditionally you would see those in salaries and benefits, and they're actually in purchase services for us, which does inflate that number for us. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Jenny.
Any other?
No.
Discussion notes? All right, so we have for approval the board meeting minutes, the August financial reports, permanent appropriations, and the approved immense certificate of estimated resources. Jenny, roll call?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our superintendent's recommendations. Do I have a move to?
Some of. Second.
Discussion?
Nope.
Have we added any routes for transportation?
No, not lately, no.
Any other discussion? All right, so we have the approved personnel items, the approved field trips, and the transportation routes. Jenny, roll call, please.
And donations.
Donations.
Donations, yes. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes. That moves us to the last public comment section of the evening. Just a reminder that this can be over any topic, and we're limited to three minutes per person for district residents only. Do we have anybody that would like to talk? Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Lyndon Nix. I live at 4243 Milliken Road in Liberty Township. One, I might be old, I don't think I'm that old, but I really have a difficult time hearing you guys with the fans going on there. So I know at the last meeting, that was a challenge, too, but just a little FYI, maybe something to work on next time.
Thank you.
But I know in December, the gender identity and expression policy was voted down. In January, the low-die was announced that that was going to be formed. And one of the things about low-die was to look at what the school district needs as far as gender identity and gender expression. Mr. Miller's been very gracious in responding to my emails, but I'm asking for a timeframe. I sent out an email. I haven't gotten a response yet, asking, do we have a timeframe? What's reasonable? We're nine months past. I understand there's some, or I understand new jobs, new positions, but what is a reasonable expectation for when low-die is going to bring forth recommendations? And that's basically my big thing. Thanks.
Can I?
Yes, you can. My, I think my battery just went dead.
So to answer your question, I guess directly would be, as soon as they're done, we'll bring them forward, and we're very close to working out and finalizing some administrative guidelines now. That's what I'll tell you.
Sorry. Hey, do we have anybody else for public comment?
Yes.
Great, well, fantastic. We are moving on to the closing comments of the evening. We'll start with Ms. Casper.
It's been a long time since we've been around. Like Mr. Coney mentioned, I had a chance to go to the Future Ready Conference, so I wanted to thank them for that invitation. It was awesome. It was very informative. It was very energizing. I got to cross going to Mansfield off my bucket list. I was saying. So I wanted to, it was a great conference. I just wanted to thank you for letting me be included. And then you can talk when we get to, about safety, when we get to you. That's it.
Mr. Parnell?
I don't have anything closing comment-wise except to recognize Mr. Ben Dibble in the house.
Woo-hoo!
He loves to be recognized.
Welcome back.
Board member emeritus.
Nothing tonight?
I just wanted to say thank you to Katie Bauer, who came tonight to introduce us. She has been so busy, and she is high-energy, and I have high expectations of what she's going to get done in this first year, and it's exciting to watch, so.
She's like the Energizer Bunny. Yes.
I am excited for our kids in that regard. And it helps, I think, too, that she has a perspective outside of K-12 education. Sorry, that was your time.
No, that's good, thank you.
I'm frigging. The only other thing that I had is, Mrs. Casper and I attended the statewide school safety and security meeting that Ohio School Boards Association put on probably two weeks ago, maybe 10 days ago.
I think so, yeah.
And there were 1,000 people there from across the state, which I thought was pretty impressive. I was, it was interesting to see who was there in terms of districts and law enforcement and mental health, and who wasn't there and who wasn't part of the conversation. The sessions that we had attended were engaging the community and their district's safety initiatives was the first one. The second was trauma-informed care, and the third one was after-school safety. So items in regards to sporting events after school or board meetings and things like that. So, and then the last general session was worth it. It was worth the whole conference just for that. And it's a shame it was at the end because I think some people left, but maybe that was the hook to get some people to stay. And the presenter was Alyssa Parker, who has a foundation called Safe and Sound Schools. And she lost her oldest daughter at Sandy Hook in Newtown. And so to hear her story was extremely moving. She obviously is personally affected, so to hear somebody talk about it that had a child that was lost there was amazing. She did not name the perpetrator. She did not blame anybody, but she talked about what schools can do, should do. A huge piece was the reunification, I thought, and just how she went through that as a parent. She had to wait five and a half hours after it happened to get confirmation, and just overwhelming. What am I missing?
You're missing that I sat between you and Mr. Passarge and bawled.
Yes.
Like hysterically crying, like, oh, this is not good, this is unprofessional. Yeah, she was very impressive because she was calm, she was, it was, again, impressive to us that she started her presentation by saying that I don't blame anyone but the perpetrator. I don't blame the school district, I don't blame the school, I don't blame the principal, the superintendent, just the perpetrator. And she was just, it was like, it was interesting just to hear it from a parent's perspective that was there. She's like, I was just a mom, that, you know, and just the difference is what she heard that day, what she saw, the little things that you can change, and.
She, her organization, I would encourage you to take a look at, is called Safe and Sound Schools. And they do a lot with the Sandy Hook Promise, but not everything. You know, the other thing she kind of called school districts out for is, you know, and we do a really good job with working with our Westchester Police and Fire and Liberty Township and Butler County Sheriff's Department, but she talked about this also being an education decision and not just a law enforcement decision, which I thought was pretty good. The two of us went, Chris Passarge was there, and so was Lauren Betcher from the district.
It was nice to hear, to be in a room with people from other districts and realize that we're doing so much right.
Yeah, there was a lot of that, that, and really, I did not have a strong takeaway until the end.
Yeah.
The other things I thought were things we either knew about or were aware of or we do already, so.
Yeah, that was the best quote-unquote session was listening to her.
Yeah. That's it.
Great. I don't have any comments because you wouldn't be able to hear me anyways. At this time, though, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose to consider the employment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, and compensation of a public employer official. We will not be taking any action following executive session. We will not be, uh, taking any action following executive session.
And I do want to state, we did add a second, um, purpose for executive session and to discuss pending or possible litigation with board's legal counsel.
Do I have a motion? Logan, roll call?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.